Good evening and welcome to the regular council of the city of Long Beach held Tuesday, October 4th, October 21st, 7:00 PM. The local councilman Delory.
President.
Councilman Mandel. Councilman Trusty.
Here.
Vice President McInnis.
Present.
Vice President Vendo.
Present.
By the record indicate the presence of City Manager Danny Gady, Corporation Council Rich Barrios from Alstom, New York.
Thank you, President McInnis. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to go up to our meeting of October. And fall is coming, I guess. The fall's here. I guess we'll begin with the city manager's report. But actually, before we do that, I think Vice President McInnis was going to give an update. There was some training that some of us got at the mayor's event. Do you want to just give a little update?
Sure. On September 23rd, September 23rd, city clerk from Breger, President Vendo and I attended the New York Conference of Mayors and Municipal Office Officials 66th Annual Fall Training in Saratoga Springs. It was three and a half days of various seminars that President Vendo and I tried to combine together. Some of the topics discussed were developing a multi-year plan, understanding the true cost of services, relationships between the city council and the volunteer fire department, and part one and two of developing a structurally balanced budget. We also met some of the vendors that Donna and the staff work with, so it was nice to put a name to a face. We also talked briefly with Controller Tom Napoli to let him know that we've been working very hard to get off the top of the list. We also talked with, John and I also talked with Elliot Arabach, the deputy controller of the office of the State Controller Division of Local Government and School Accountability. He was very supportive of the restructuring initiatives that we're undertaking and very laudatory of our city manager, Donna Gady. I also wanted to mention that the executive director, Peter Bates, was thrilled to see President Vendo and I at this event. It's the first time in his memory that he saw a city council official from Long Beach actually attending the training program. They opened up, extended an olive branch to maybe do some more trainings down here in the region. And President Vendo and I both agreed that it's extremely valuable exercise to get, have access to the top people that can advise us to make sure that we're doing our jobs to the best of our ability. That's my report.
All right, thank you. And we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you very much. The first thing is that we had a ceremony yesterday and Councilman Delory. Yeah, can you hear me now? Okay. Councilman Delory will explain the ceremony if you can.
Thank you, Donna. Yesterday, here in this room, I had the pleasure of being with John Carbone and his father, Gene Carbone, to receive a check in the amount of $300,000. It was special for me because John and I were classmates in Long Beach High School. We were on the Long Beach High School swim team together, and John was the co-captain our senior year. John and I were members of the Long Beach Life Guard Patrol and are part of the run line. John's father, Gene Carbone, was a member of the Long Beach Police Department and rose to the rank of captain as well as a former chief of the Long Beach Life Guard Patrol. Chief Gillespie was there, as well as swimmer chiefs, John Spoon, Steve Coe, and of course, Gene Carbone, John's father. Council President John Vendo and Councilwoman Elizabeth Trusty were present as well. On behalf of the city of Long Beach, thank you, John Carbone. That's it.
Thank you very much. Can I just tell people what the $300,000 contribution was for?
That was, it's for the naming rights on the building, the new lifeguard headquarters pavilion at Riverside Boulevard and the boardwalk. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next person that will be coming up is Ronnie Klein from JCC. Can you get your stuff right over there, Ronnie? And she's just going to give a brief update of the collaboration where they took over our programs, our daycare programs. You don't have to step inside.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So in May of '21, we opened the medical center earlier than we last visited, but people are busy saying, and it's going very well. We have two rooms full waiting to fill the third one, and the baby store is our wall. And you might just step by, it's not like we're building right now, but eventually things will open up and we hope to have you. In September, we opened aftercare, before and aftercare programs at Vito School, West School, and in the morning, East School. Those are new programs for us in our second year of LBD. We, of course, like every other new program, had some growing pains, but things are moving along really, really smoothly right now. And we're hoping for a great year.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, our next speaker is Commissioner Lauren Watch.
Couple of things that happened with the police department over the last, since the last meeting. Our city council that gave the authority, we changed the ordinance to have booting ordinance. We have deployed boots throughout the city. We have four boots that have been deployed so far. We're getting our staff to come in, and it seems to be very successful at this time. We have some information that we're going to be putting up on our website for public information. It's going to go on the Long Beach Police Department's website, Facebook page, our Instagram page, as well as the city's page, on the different types of scams that are happening around the county. And someone who might have received an email, I actually received one today that said that my Norton computer virus protection charge had went through. So I called, knowing it was a scam, just to see what happened. And I said, oh, if you're home, I'll send you the information right now. Well, if it was click on the link and a form will come up, and you fill it out, and you can cancel right away. I said, well, Gene, can I just keep my account information now? You can have the other bank account? And, uh, so, um, some of the things that happened, you know, and this is, we do this from time to time, but we should know that I received a phone call on Thursday afternoon from city manager Gady while I was in my office. And it was, Ronnie, I think, there's an old man here at CBS who's getting scammed. I said, well, where are you? I got the phone, and I got to walk away. And it turns out that the older gentleman had received a phone call that he had, I believe, an Amazon charge for a telephone. And he needed, in order for that, he did not have to pay $1,100 for the telephone, he had to go get gift cards. And you take the gift cards, and they will give you the phone number for you to read them into the federal wallet that is locked, so that the money could go in there. And this gentleman, this older gentleman, did it for $200 with their gift cards, and then he said, well, you have to do 200 more, and then the next one's 500. And he was intercepted by city manager Gady and some other people.
Wait, I want to say he was intercepted by the staff at CBS. He went to purchase the card, and the staff kept asking him, why are you purchasing all of these gift cards? I just happened to be the customer that was standing next to him and heard the conversation. And so they said, no, you're being scammed. And then when he said, thank you very much, we walked away. I asked him to make sure he filed a police report so that we can get in touch and we can keep track of all of these. But to my surprise, the gentleman, which wasn't an older gentleman, was so adamant about reporting it that he was walking from CBS to the police department. And I happened to have walked down the street and saw him walking, and then that's when I called him. And then I walked him back to CBS, again told the staff at CBS, I appreciate what they did, because they stopped him from being scammed. And that I would definitely, I also called John McMillan and said, we need to get this out on the website. We need to alert the community that these scams are happening, and that they are especially targeting the seniors. So it wasn't me, it was CBS employees that I told them.
All right, we're running points to me today, what do you want to talk about? So in any case, we're going to be putting up a lot of information on our website to educate the public in ways, look, public, if anybody tells you to send their money over the phone, don't do it. It's a scam. Okay? And if it's real, have them send you a bill with an address, and as soon as you start asking for further information, and they refuse to give you anything further, it's a scam. All right? We'll get it out, we'll get watch information. We'll be doing one, one of these bulletins every week for the next several weeks, about five weeks. As everybody knows also, we had Irish Day this past weekend. It was a very nicely attended event. I'm estimating between 50,000 and 20,000 people watched the parade. It was very nicely done. At the end of the parade, which was the parade, we had the street fair, which was a beautiful family event. We made predictions to the police department, my thinking is they're probably going to go south. And it really didn't go too bad this year. We had 250, it was our first arrest of this lonely, roving young man. And we made a public DWI arrest, and we made a few other arrests. As the evening went on, you know, first thing I want to say is the cooperation between all of the different departments was really phenomenal this year. I mean, between the recreation department, our street maintenance, our sanitation department, city manager's laws, everybody really came together and made it a great event. Transportation for the bus service and getting shoveling people in and out. Part of this entire event was that we decided that we were going to pull in all the bars, and we let them know that we were going to be doing bar checks that day. We told them that the SLA, the state liquor authority, was going to be there, as well as the fire marshal, and us were going to be doing bar checks to make sure there wasn't over occupancy and there wasn't over serving. For the most part, most of our bars didn't really follow the rules. There were a few that wound up getting cited. We wound up, Swing Valley's got cited for numerous violations and was shut down for a number of hours, and they were given permission to reopen when they complied with certain things that needed to be complied with later on in the evening. The Gabag was shut down, had a lot of violations there, also including over occupancy, the problem with the fire alarm, and other things, multiple sorts of things. And then the jetty also had a dramatic over occupancy issue, as well as other, some of those. So for the public to know and understand, they were cited for a couple of summonses by the police department, two or three, he says, and then the fire department, the fire marshal, I should say, cited each place for approximately eight to 10 violations, and the state liquor authority, 10 to 15 violations, depending on which one, to keep them in alignment. The only other thing that happened was at the saloon, there was one instance where an undercover agent went down by the state liquor authority, went in, and they served one person underage, and they were cited for that. So other than that, I mean, the bars were very, very awkward. We had conversations with them as other bars were being closed, and say, hey, what's your plan? What are you going to be doing? They closed down those places willingly, talking with us, saying, okay, what time you did, you want to close? Well, outside at 9:30, we'll shut the outside, and you know, we'll be out of here by 10 o'clock, you know? They were really, really trying hard to make it so that the city was in a much better condition that's wanting. And the feedback that we're getting is that it really turned out to be a nicer event and a much more controlled event. Are there any questions from the city council about it? Good? Okay, thank you.
Mr. or Commissioner Palizzi.
I just wanted to give a brief description of about two new items on the agenda tonight. One is item three, resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase 24 SuperCenturion hydrants. My dad seems to be using SeaLock hydrants. We've seen the Everly looking ones in the sea all around town, and we've reported in lately. After lengthy internal discussion with the city's boardroom, we decided to go back to the newer SuperCenturion. And I'm just going to mention the five reasons why we decided to do that. One, they're definitely easier to work on according to the transmission volume. They're definitely easier to pay the parts for, which is very cool. They're preferred by paid and volunteer fire departments, which is of the key importance. And one very important thing is that they're cheaper. They're approximately $500 cheaper per hydrant than the SeaLock type that we're currently using. And in whole wide view, it's a lot easier to use. You can see that in pretty much every other town. So for that reason, again, it's just a precursor to the resolution that's going to be, which is item three, that we're going to talk about later. I want to just give you that quick and important. The second point is item five, which is a resolution to enter into a contract with the installation of PVC fabric structure, contact with Almar steel truss to cover the open air basis at the Royal Truitt plant. Intent is to protect the city's water supply from vandalism, contamination, since they're less than 100 feet from the adjacent rail path. H2N, the consulting program that was retained by the city for this project, and they did look at five or six other options to cover the cases. We don't feel like a hard enclosure, it's called, or a building enclosure, which is possibly 1.9 million. Fabric covers, which are approximately 30,000. Retractable fabric, which is 788,000. Flap aluminum, 626,000. But they were implementing this PVC cover that we're working on. Essentially, what these covers do is, as part of the treatment process, the water is treated with alum, which basically makes the armor settle out, so it's a part of the treatment process. Again, it's less than 100 yards away from the street, 100 feet away from the street, and it can easily be contaminated by someone going or something, you know, from the street into the water system. So for that reason, it's an extremely important project. Just so you know, the warranty on the structure is 10 years on the fabric and 12 years on the steel structure of the building. It needs 120 miles per hour up here to the water level. And that's just a general review, so preparation for the council to vote on. Sure. Thank you very much.
Joe, do you want us, if we have questions about that, do you want us to wait until the resolution item comes up, or should we, do that?
If you, I'm going to give you another brief overview when it comes out, but I didn't want to.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's up to you. I'm fine.
We'll wait till, all right.
Corporation Council, Rich Barrios.
So I've been asked to speak about the items, one is item number seven. I'll give you a little brief overview on some of the terms of the agreement itself. So as some of you might know, this is about a bus service from our garage, the IR station to the Point Lydon. Based on the research I've done, we've been doing this pretty much since the MTA, this continued providing service, decade. Since taking that word over, the city has had an agreement with the county to provide reimbursement towards the city's cost of providing that bus service. For this particular agreement, it only covers calendar years 2018 through 2021. Just by way of background, there's a team of us at Transportation Department, which obviously, in my office, met with the county a number of times over the last couple of months, with the primary purpose of attempting to recruit funds that the bus service has run into, they had not yet been paid, and to negotiate in terms for future calendar use. So the understanding we've gleaned from those meetings with the county representatives was that a lot of the budget for 2018 through 2021 was exactly 75,000 dollars per year, and those funds could not be modified for the county issued payment unless we actually had an agreement in writing and signed. So that's the purpose of this particular resolution, is to basically get all the money owed to us to date, so we can proceed and negotiate in terms of the future. The renewable provision is a grant by the county, just so you all know, it's a mutual option to do it, and the gist of it being, with our meeting with the county, they had asked us for some information on what the actual cost of operating that route was. Controller's office, myself, and the Department of Transportation worked together to provide them those details. We anticipate now that they're going to, their county budget session now should be voting on it by the end of October, I believe, for amendment to decrease those amounts so that we don't operate at a deficit. The general gist of this is to just get the maximum amount possible authorized by the county and move forward and get some more funds moving forward. That's all I got.
All right, there you go. Our councilor. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to make very brief announcements to say that we're in progress scheduling a working session with the city council to have special working sessions on beach park operations for the summer of 2021. And, yeah, it's going to be a scheduled one meeting because the topic is important and pretty involved to just discuss a treaty we're doing. This meeting that needs its own separate discussion.
And we'll let everyone know when the work session is scheduled. Our last speaker is John McMillan.
I've wanted you to hear for a reason, about the topic of COVID, so.
What the law. That's kind of.
Okay, so, as alluded to, about the topic of COVID, so, numbers are actually trending in a positive direction for us, which I'm not sure anyone really would have predicted with the school year kicking in three weeks ago. But the week ending, well, actually, as of the 4th of October, 63.9% of Long Beach's total population has received a vaccine or has pulled vaccine, I should say. For the week ending, October 4th, there was just 38 new confirmed positive cases in the city, which is significantly down, I think, I would say about five weeks ago, we were approaching the 100 mark. Long Island's positivity rate is 2.8%, and that's compared to the state's 2.3%. Again, numbers that are all trending in the right direction, likely reflecting a lot of people still doing the right thing, wearing masks in indoors, large group settings, and a steady increase in vaccination was driving this. To that end, Mount Sinai South Nassau is back to mobile, will be out in front of the city hall tomorrow from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It's made possible through federal dollars that are through the town campstead who has supply, I'm sorry, I do have that back in the back. An update too, I know a couple of councilmembers near and dear to heart, a long-lasting parking management system, RFP, looks like it's going to be issued on Friday, and we are requesting that responses to the RFP will come back early in November. It's either going to be the eighth of July, the 12th, but the week of the eighth. We did put a final dot the i's across the t's with our consulting. It did span significantly, but this is, it includes a lot of, you can have a parking district, but you don't have the enforcement tools in play, so, you know, we brought the police department involved, and very helpful in saying there's a really, really enforcement. For those that don't quite know what I'm talking about, it's the Central Business District in town doing parking, there's an parking. The Army Corps of Engineers, who all of us in Long Beach should be familiar with, have completed or put forth a final draft of a back page study. So this is in addition to, we have our Dunes system here in Long Beach, and folks saying they did the studies to really look at what are the most effective ways to protect the entire South Shore, here really through, through Jones Beach and like. What they have for, what they have put forth is something like a $4 billion package. That's the estimate for what it is so far. There is no commitment of funding from the federal government, but what it looks like for Long Beach is basically raising every single residential unit in the city and forward by the commercial. They are having a public hearing and presentation on that tomorrow. It's on our Facebook page, it's on Army Corps' Facebook page, which is open here. So it's tomorrow from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM, and their website is www.nncap.usace.Army. The link to the actual meeting itself is extremely long, so I won't read it off, but it'll be on our website tomorrow morning, it's already up on our Facebook page. Onto lighter affairs, our annual costume parade and pumpkin patch is going to be held this Saturday from 9:30 to 11:30 at the Rec Field. Pre-registration is required. You can register via our website, which is longbeachny.gov/costume. And just as a heads up, we've been talking with the Chamber of Commerce, we are going to, once again, last year, the city held its first annual Halloween decorating contest for homes across the city and also businesses. We, though, we're going to be going live with accepting applications and entries to that, sometimes that's what I got. Question?
John, I don't have a question, but I have a lot of thank yous on the, on the, one request I would like to bring up, and is to, the Army Corps of Engineers really should be coming back at some point, I hope, because the jetties are clearly to be reviewed.
I think they're probably.
Well, it probably is, but I think they, Senator Shuler and Luke Sander-Kaminsky and others have talked about the Jones Beach and other areas, but I just wanted to say that it's not forgotten about, just a lot of requests about proving the jetties, signage outside, there are certain jetties that you can't see at high tide, and just a general revisit of primaries of the union, and that's basically.
And now, when I know our Department of Public Works is all over them.
There is an upcoming.
You just settled.
I will, I'll hit build on that, I will say, we pressed them apart to do a public information session on the back page study here, but they are not doing live meetings as of yet.
Maybe you just gave.
And I also, oh.
To elaborate on what John mentioned about the Army Corps back there, it's just one thing we should really look at when we do it, the cost. Right now, the rate's up at 65% federal and 35% local, and the locals are by the city of Long Beach, the state, the town campstead, Nassau County, so it comes out in billions, you know, it costs the city, you know, 300 million to like a billion dollars, so it's just something we should really look at, we look at that for. Of course, there is a big burden on the city.
Joe, I remember the last time we were on the call with Don Cor, and you had made several recommendations. Did they incorporate all of your recommendations?
Well, it's interesting you mention that, because one of the first things that they had in their presentation was they were building, their proposal was to build a wall around the city of Long Beach, including them in the middle of the Dunes and along the North Shore at elevation 16 in ABD. To give you some perspective on that, I'm working at elevation. To give you some perspective on that, I'm working at elevation ten. So they were proposing a wall, six hundred, we see a newly elected canal bucket that was going to basically surround the city. So of course, the city council and myself, you know, after I proposed it before and started to help up all the chairs, we said that's just not doable. So they came back with a revised plan that basically is the wall they were proposing is more surrounding than the critical facilities, like water plant, water treatment plant, canal, and has a lot more house raises in it. That being said, it doesn't mean we're wrong for it, but certainly better than what they were originally proposing, which was, in my eyes, was, if you said to them, you know, you just spent a hundred million dollars building a Dune at elevation fourteen, now you want to put a wall through it? You know, so it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. And to answer your other question, the Army Corps and PCC is coming back, I don't have to bring my phone with me, to do an inspection of the, the, the Dune and the Beach project in the next week or two, I would forward it to you, like in the morning. Because someone from the city, I'll be myself, or the Department of Operations will be attending that. Sorry.
Maybe they'll quote it from your computer.
They will.
And I might be.
They will, absolutely. It's, I just got an email and just to bring my phone with me.
Joe, where are your office or the engineers that we hire also collecting data and substantiation to communicate to them that there is a problem here besides just a one shot side inspect, side inspection?
Yeah, Coastal Fed Engineers is a consultant firm that we have obtained that helps us handle issues, you know, regarding coastal origin protection, and they wrote on the city's app link, lengthy report, basically documenting the four condition of the new jeton built, you know, the engine basically collapsing, and that the, you know, they give this horseshoe effect in the areas where it didn't replace the jetties, and you can see that the horseshoe effect there is already, and they buried those existing ruins, and they are, as councilman and Laura said, very good for the surfers at hot tide, you just can't stand it.
So is there updates in that report, if they're going in?
I don't have anything present, but I'll talk to them and the Army Corps about the status of what we have.
Do you mean, was it just given already? Yeah.
Sure.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And can you send that date to everyone?
I'll send it to everyone, yes. I just got an email from the city, let us know about the meeting where we're going to do a tech inspection of Dune to walk over to the beach itself, ruins, I'll forward that.
Joe, is the CDC in New York, or they're based in the office, based in the local area?
This is, it's the Army Corps, the back in the project, it's, it's for a while.
But the ocean part?
Uh, I'm dealing with the, I think, region one, which is in Stone Brook. But you're correct, the back page study is based, a gentleman who's leading is at a lot of it, that's what we do. But I do encourage you to watch, look at their presentation, it's, it's very interesting. So.
On a completely different note, those that were down the boardwalk in the area of Laurelton, or we're tracking up Riverside Boulevard today, we have noticed some strange occurrences. We have Apple TVs in town filming a new series that's going to be giving some time next week, so they have, they have set up their base camp in the private lot in Laurelton. And there's also going to be some partnering impacted just south of Park Avenue on Riverside and at the corner of Park Avenue and Riverside, but outside today where they shot on the beach, they should be shooting primarily on private property throughout a couple of locations out in the city for the remainder of the week, and by Friday afternoon, Saturday morning, they will pack up and left, but it's an exciting opportunity, even though it's going to be mostly, I think, edited Photoshop or some more complex program to the point where you might not even have, they will recognize Long Beach, it's, it's good to have us on the map. So as long as that's updated, in case anybody gets any window of where all these trailers are, or numbers, or something, that's what it is. That's all I got.
Thank you. And that concludes the city council report. Okay, keep some thought to the agendas.
And when is Google ready to fire me into our seventeen, September ninth, twenty-two? My question is, where? Second?
I love it.
Lord of Consul's alert?
Yes.
Councilor Randall?
Yes.
Councilor Trustee?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bennett?
Yes.
And terms of resolution authorizing the city manager for purchase fire hydrants from the lowest responsible vendors?
Rich? Sorry.
Maybe you can ask one else. So this resolution is for executive staff, which is purchased in various t-shirts and other apparel difference. This is the result of a bid for purchasing. The award is being split between two vendors at this time. City council, any questions? We'll try and ask.
Any questions from the council? All right, any questions from the public? All right, seen enough, let's move on to item three.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager for purchase fire hydrants from the lowest responsible vendor. Manager received in the office of purchasing on Tuesdays in Temple 14, 2021, to the end. The bid was for twenty-four various sized hydrants, from three foot depth to five foot depth. It was a ruler, super security fire hydrant, that total cost for one time purchase of fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. The lower bidder was Ferguson Water Works, two hundred land yard, a duty my call for your. Just to give you the cost associated with the Seaglock hydrants versus the U-Lock hydrants that were buying, a three foot bearing hydrant under the new rule is, for super century is two thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents. Seaglock is two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and ninety cents, so it's yeah, priced in five hundred dollars. For a five foot bearing hydrant, the cost is, for super century is two thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars, whereas the Seaglock hydrant, your old reading is two thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. In every case, the Seaglock hydrant is lower. So previously, the city purchased Seaglocks, but again, the super century is easier to work on, easier to get parts for, or why they're used in tenant, and they're preferred by the Water Transmission Department and the Fire Department as well. So I recommend that work these two, Ferguson issues for super century targets. Any questions?
I, oh, sorry, John. Go ahead. Um, is there a list of what hydrants will be replaced in key twenty-four? I know some are more rusty than others.
I can get that from the Water Transmission Department, they have a list of the older hydrants that need to be replaced in the city, and I can provide that, I don't have that over there.
And will we be, will we be replacing any of the ET version of fire hydrants and ET? Or else, other people think that they charge for electric car, so will they be replaced?
Not at this time, not at this time. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, since we're switching back to a more traditional model, what was the reason we bought so many more expensive ones?
I wasn't really involved in that original purchase of Seaglock, so I can't really comment on that, so I don't know.
It must have been like ten years ago, right?
Yeah, it was something like that.
Yeah, no, I know you weren't, yeah.
Well, I think the form was a good, so to pretend that the order of home was a good performance number, because I know it was discussed with quite a long, happily, you know, they definitely, from what I understand, did not like that hydrant, but again, I also pretended it was, you know, it was a very good performance of it, and he's the one at the time, I don't want to mention it, but he's the one who was charging the system, and we did take that, and I want to discuss this, you know, the other ones in the field, I have been in dialogue with John Mooney and the current personnel charge of the Department, and they could walk onto the road for the traditional super century. And, Joe, no, we're back to the hundred percent.
It was like, I don't know, terrace, safety issue, you can't, you can't access that hydrant unless you have a special right to.
Well, with the town, the Director of Operations is saying that there was a special access for that Seaglock hydrant, which we're preventing like real estate terrorism and things of that nature, but I would also present the problem for the water problem because you have to carry two separate keys now, where you had to have one for the Seaglock, one for the super century, so the response is not potentially longer, the end of the residency, so that's why we're, I'm recommending that go back to the traditional, and again, that's based on my dialogue with the Superintendent of Water Transmission, the current superintendent that is.
My other question is, these, these super centuryans have a, have an oil reservoir of seal called an O-ring, and then they also have some rubber returns.
That's correct.
Which basically means they may need preventative maintenance, are we going to set up, or do we have a preventative maintenance program for these things, or is it just, we just do corrective maintenance?
The one you mentioned there is, it's a very, it's a, it's a good point, because I actually spoke to the superintendent today about this very issue, and he brought to my attention this issue with the reservoir, and that from his perspective, it was much easier to work on than the Seaglock, and he was presenting that as a benefit, having that water reservoir in the hydrant. Now, does it, do they have preventative maintenance for hydrants? I'll have to ask him, but I believe they do.
Okay. So, any other questions from the council members? I think we're not many questions from the public. Seal, I'm in for you to be next.
Kathleen?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kathleen, sorry. I should send this only.
I just wanted to know, like, what does it take to get a new hydrant? Okay, when I moved in, I'm on three hundred block of Market Street, twenty-seven years ago, there was no water coming through the hydrant, so we got it fixed. There was a huge fire in January, the hydrant on weekends frozen, it was my hydrant that saved the house and my friends in the corner. It's disgusting, it's probably from the thirties or the twenties, it's two different kinds of, everybody around me has new hydrants, what do I have to do to get a new hydrant?
Essentially, we have a smaller emergency water supply plan, and in that plan, we have a list of how many hydrants are in our system, how many, if you have water mains there are in our system, the size of each water main in the system, and the first priority is to address the hydrants that are not super century, they're called hens, they have, they clouse, there's two names, other than the super century, it's out of the oldest, from the twenties and thirties. So that's really what they're going on around the place. However, in this case, if you just give your address, I will have something down there, and if it's, like you said, we'll have a request. If we're on twenty-four, and we have a small stock of hydrants, you might get an animal going, you still have some of those.
Like what?
The Seaglock Hailhydrant, if you have some left in stock.
Just anything.
Okay, if you just give your address, that's okay.
All right, it's awesome.
with the, with all of the departments. It's really strategic, you're looking ahead, you know, what's practical, what, what the people that are actually working on the equipment, doing a day out, what's best for them, because they're part of the solution, and I think that's pretty testament to the entire team.
Well, thank you. In this case, I think it's a no brainer, it's a, it's a, now, this, you were brought into the court.
You'd be surprised.
So it's a no brainer.
Roy Lester from Long Beach. Going back, John, it wasn't ten years ago we did this, we did on this back in July seventeen, twenty eighteen, and at that time, I remember John Miranda was espousing the benefits of this, and we spoke up about it and we questioned getting a proprietary type of fire hydrant that nobody else makes, the reason they opened, well, it's a company in Ocean Side, so for some reason, the ability was better. But when I started to look into it, it's, they have testimonials on their website, Seaglock, and says, since installing the, hold on, since installing the Seaglock Spartan Hydrant in two thousand and eleven, its performance has far exceeded my expectation. Since years, the hydrants have endured the harsh conditions of super storm, sandy, and four extreme winters, never once seizing, rusting, or freezing, which often occurred with the oldest dial hydrants. The Spartan Hydrant has operated flawlessly in safeguarding the public and is ultimately protected across states to the taxpayers. That was on their website today, and that was from the Superintendent of Water Transmission, City of Long Beach, New York. When, back in June twenty eighteen, we had the city saying that the advantage of a Seaglock hydrant is that the body of the hydrant is actually guaranteed for twenty-five years, and with a lot of saltwater in the air and flooding that we had in the city, a lot of existing hydrants don't fare very well in the terms of the body of hydrants actually lasting, so it's the only hydrant you can get with a twenty-five day guarantee. Again, as we try to replace them over a period of time, we have one single type of hydrant that will reduce the cost to make repairs, it will reduce to the cost of carrying inventory to repair the hydrants. Well, while it's not typical, they have one hydrant, something like a fire hydrant, or water meter, it's very important to try to standardize this type. So if you look at this hydrant, they, once they, the ET hydrants, they're guaranteed for twenty-five years, the new hydrants we're getting are guaranteed for ten years. The ET hydrant has a fifty year warranty on the outer coating and a useful life of over a hundred years. The ones that we're getting now have a useful life of maybe seventy-five years. So if you look at the replacement, it's actually cheaper to go with the other hydrants, but you know, I have to respect Joe's opinion on this, and he says it's better, but I guess what others mean is that we do this every few years, and we shouldn't be doing this every few years, we should get something and get a standard and not have to go through this, because now we have two different hydrants, and you know, the ones, like he says, we need different keys. Now, I know the water water can give you the keys.
Why should you wrap it up? It's starting us to listen.
I'm just trying to find a way that we don't have to go through this, you know, and it is, the Seaglock hydrants were cheaper because we only have to replace, we have to replace eight of the other hydrants a year and only six of the Seaglock, which saves us five thousand dollars as opposed to the five hundred for the eight that were replaced, which is four thousand. I know it's a small amount, but it is a savings, I'm just wondering why we keep doing this.
Yeah, the real thing to say is, you know, I spoke to length with the city's superintendent of order, the current superintendent of order, and I'm with the, I follow their recommendation, I'm not an expert in fire hydrants, I don't think to be an expert in fire hydrants, but they tell me this hydrant is a, they, from their perspective, is easier to work on, more importantly, it's easier to parts for, even though they're located in Ocean Side, the super century, real hydrant is widely utilized throughout the island, you can see it everywhere, it's a standard hydrant, so I support, you know, their.
Yes, I have a question.
The ten, you're right on it, you walked it forward to a hundred, but this hydrant is hugely large, it's better for. Thank you.
Have to expect here. Okay, any questions from the public? All right, seen enough, let's move on to item four.
Our first resolution authorizing the city manager into a contract for radius maintenance with cell response to. maintenance with cell response to it.
So, this is, uh, multimedia communications, um, multimedia has been providing radio and radio repair for the most critical communication systems in the city for about, I think it is 27 years. Uh, they're very intimately familiar with our, uh, our systems, very reliable, uh, in, uh, in the way they handle us when we call the service, and, um, quite frankly, they're the only literally person interested in doing this, in this regard, because they installed and designed most of the communication system that we have installed as well.
All right, any questions from the council members? All right, seen enough, any for the public? All right, seen enough, let's move on to Title V.
The Congress Resolution authorized the city manager to enter a contract with installation of an enclosure of the open air drinking bases at the city's water treatment.
Uh, good evening, again, this is going to be a little bit of a repeat of what I mentioned earlier, so bear with me, please. Um, this side five, it's a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter a contract for the installation of an enclosure of the open air basins at the water treatment. Um, being received in the office of Public Works on Thursday, July 29, 2021. Uh, there were three bids for the project, one, the low bill was RJ Industries, at $93,700. A second bid was Benson Contract, and, at $1,504,000. And the third bid was Phil West Industries, at $1,235,000. Um, H2M is the consulting firm that the city retained, um, but that, the firm was obtained by the city, designed the project, and they formed a reference check on the junior project industries, and was satisfactory. Um, I personally worked with them on, on several projects throughout the past, and they've always done a good job, and it's been a pleasure. Um, the scope of work for the project includes covering the open air drinking bases, again, with a custom white PVC fabric structure, top to galvanize to trust, uh, it's a permanent structure, um, at the city's water purification plant. There's going to be a new exhaust system, uh, the fan, and a little bit of vents, the lighting, valve replacements inside the tanks. Um, just so you know, and I mentioned this earlier, the open air basins are utilized to pump this treatment process, and basically, these treatment basins, uh, Al's in, so rust, uh, I'm sorry, iron is actually settled out of this basin. Again, it's all 100 feet from the, from the side door, and it's definitely affordable to benefits. Um, so basically, I recommend the work of the project on the issue. Do you have any questions?
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I remember, Mr. Miranda, we, the city bought something previous, are we replacing this, or is this a, on, this is a guy?
I, I know you. Uh, this is, um, no, this, they don't exist right now, and the system, the water system, the drinking water system is extremely vulnerable. The one thing I did forget to mention as well, is that although this project is $1 million, and I was hoping to put it in the resolution, we're putting a confirmation, um, we're potentially going to get $500,000 from Senator Kaminsky's office, uh, as we're handling the DC. That's actually where I come to start, I'm putting it on, on the agenda, uh, because it could be received July, I thought that we were aware of this a month ago, but we're still waiting for that confirmation, but I really have to go with this project, um, if we want to get it built. But there is this $500,000 grant, so hopefully, Eric knows well, half the money is going to be reimbursed at the grant, so that's just something to add.
Yeah, Councilwoman Trusten, you might be confusing that with the cover of the settling tank and the sewage butt that collects, and we, and we also have to replace that.
Well, actually, that's a whole other story, but, the key to the value of that story is that we've been dealing with the DC, and they're not going to let us replace that cover right now, because we're in the process of, uh, there is a plan for compensation, and we fault them, even though we borrowed the money for the project, we fault that, and we're able to get, concede that we don't have to do it, since the plan's being potentially abandoned in 2024, um, you know, we've been $650,000, at least the money that we can put towards the project, as opposed to continue operating a plan that's going to be demolished in three years. That's a good one.
In, in the capital plan, uh, there was, uh, it was identified that there was $813,600 available for this project.
Correct.
Since the project came in at 990, '07, is it that, the project came in over what we estimated it would cost?
Yeah, it's actually much more than we estimated. The estimate was, um, when they, when they decided to go with this fabric structure, they were, uh, posting via, to, to $500,600,000 range, and the bid actually came in, this is the second bid by the way, this is already bid, first bid was, I think, even higher, so we rebid it again, hopefully get better results, unfortunately, we don't get better results, and we came up with $900,000. We were able to use funding in capital budget from, uh, the water system improvements line, in addition to the money we designated, um, for this project, as the balance that we needed to do the project. If you look in the, um, resolution, it says, uh, a different H-line, is a H-line for the cover of the bases, and then there's another H-line for water system improvements update, like from 15, 17, 18, or something like that.
So, the estimates for the project, the original estimate, the 813,600, is that developed by H2M?
H2M gave us all of the estimates, and it's been happening with just about every project that I'm working on right now, everything's coming in higher, I don't know if it's because of, it's just, it seems to be like delays and lags and everything, price expirations in steel, um, lumber, um, it seems to be affecting our shipping, uh, trails, containers, it just, it seems to be, um, it's a problem through the whole food right now, we're getting high prices.
Joe, we, we budgeted, we approved $813,000 in expenses.
$813,000, that's much remaining, I believe.
Oh, what's remaining?
That's remaining, because that doesn't include consulting services.
Okay, and then, and then we also, you also budgeted the $500,000 grant on the revenue side to offset, partially offset this.
Correct, that hasn't, that's, that's the $500,000 that we're hoping to offset.
That was added to the errand sheet, did they know, right?
Um, I, I, I don't know that for sure, they're not, I'll have to, I'll have to go with it.
Well, we talked about that, right?
I think we were shopping about $20,000. That $500,000, uh, from Senator Kaminsky's office, that has not been approved yet, and since it hasn't been approved yet, it was not approved on the budget as a revenue or a hundred percent or anything. Um, I think they, you are thinking about the $300,000 grant that was on the errand in, um, 2021. There was a revenue item of $300,000 revenue that was supposed to go through the grant.
I, I thought the state budget that was recently passed had $500,000 in water improvement upgrades for the city of Long Beach, that's what Senator Kaminsky had communicated to me.
Yeah, not, not in our budget yet, but, but we, we will get, we get everything processed. Um, what's going to happen is that $800,000, um, that, that you see on the resolution, it was borrowed short-term, meaning that if we will receive the grant, we will just pay that with the grant, how much the grant will be, and the city will not have to borrow long-term for 30 years to be there.
So, you were, you were correct that it was approved in the state budget, but it still needs to go through the bureaucratic approval process, um, so it's not, it's not technically approved and released by the appropriate agency until it is technically approved and released by, released by the appropriate, so, we want that to the budget, but...
Thank you very much for the explanation, I did not realize that, that is, that is a great.
Ina, Edel, Joe, just those age accounts, is the amount that's there listed, is that money that we've already borrowed and is in, and available to spend, or is it a future borrowing? This money, it seems like...
This is money that has been borrowed, okay, we're not going to manage it for sale. Whereas the money in the capital budget, we have, that we just approved, the cap's just approved in, in, uh, June or May, that has not, it's been authorized, we're not borrowing. So we, you'll see, uh, in February, you know, before the resolution, we will discuss it, and they'll, um, she'll have to be, we're going to treat all of the money for certain projects that we, we just got the point, that money is not going to be borrowed. But this has, this is involved, any interest on it?
This is borrowed, and now we want to...
No, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, any questions? Any other questions from the council members? All right, here are none, any questions from the public? All right, seen enough, let's move on to Title VI.
Title VI is a resolution authorized by the city manager to accept funds from the New York State National Waters Compensation allowance.
Good evening again, I'm Chairman, I'm the Board of Council, um, so, the city of Long Beach is part of this nonprofit water compensation self-insurance group program, which is not through words. Um, every year, if they operate a surplus, um, they've got checks to all of its members, kind of like a warranty program where we receive that they, for the last three years, we receive these checks, um, so this resolution is authorizing us to accept, accept the warranty check, in the amount of $42,498, those are workers' comp lines, and put it by the general.
Any questions from the council members?
Uh, just a weekly budget for this money, correct? So this money coming in is extra additional revenue that once we see, we would have to allocate it to or towards something. Is that correct? You have to accept it? You have to accept it?
We don't know what the check is until we...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You're just saying, we don't know what the amount is until they actually issue a check.
Oh, yeah, we don't know if we're going to get a check from them, because they don't know their will give distribution, it depends on their operation. But, um, as we said, it's not in the budget, and hopefully, this will fall into the balance to improve our financial position.
That's right, so, it's conservative budget practices, and letting conversation wasn't expected, and if we want, it can, nothing else in, as to what else.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the council? All right, any questions from the public? This is the second, third year I think we've gotten a refund from them. Yeah, we actually, they actually gave us the check at the di count, and they made Mr. Frazier come straight home with no e-mails with the check.
Thank you for the announcement.
So, uh, let's move on to Title VII.
The resolution authorized the city manager to execute an agreement with the county of Nassau for the optimization of bus service on Seagull Lock and Long Beach Station. Do you have a statement?
Yeah, I have an amendment to propose, uh, proposing we strike the second whereas clause, and I'm, uh, proposing we change the resolved statement to read...
The last resolved.
The, the last resolved, sorry, to read, uh, resolve that the renewal of said agreement shall be subject to city council approval.
Do you have a second?
I am.
Go ahead, Councilor Gore. Um, do you?
Yes.
Councilor Mandell?
Yes.
Councilor Trusten?
Yes.
Vice President Pudines?
Yes.
President Brevin?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I can present it again. How's that? So, uh, just as I discussed with the same ideas, uh, report, this resolution is authorizing us to execute an agreement with the county of Nassau for that for pick-up of service. Again, the term of this agreement would be from January 1st, 2018, through December 31st of this year, to get $75,000 per year, uh, and respective renewals will not just be submitted to city councils, but we're going to try a lot more.
Any questions from the council members? All right, seen enough, let's move on to Title X.
I have a means resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2021, 22 fiscal year.
So, this resolution is to move funding, uh, together with, uh, the employees that were, um, moved from one department to another. Uh, we had, um, been trying to improve the operations of the, well, the departments on the third floor, the city hall, the tax, uh, receiver, water, and sewer administration, clerk department, uh, city code department, and tax assessment department, and we've created a service center. Actually, when you get on the elevator, you can see the, um, windows, and we have, um, rotating schedule with representatives from each department, um, now at the windows, so, again, the state president's, um, getting a one-stop service. Um, so, in connection with, uh, that, that improvement, we had to stop that department of, with extra employing, and that employee was transferred from the building department to the, um, tax, uh, receiver's department. What you see, $36,000 is his salary for the remainder of the year. Um, in order to, um, make the building department cool, um, we had, as you heard, um, JCC today was speaking about taking, uh, over, um, operations of, um, the childcare, um, facilities and after, before school, so, uh, we have a resource in youth and families, so, services department, and we've brought, transferred that person into the building department.
Okay, any questions from the council members?
In, in doing this analysis to move a person from the building department to the tax receiver, um, what is the projected increase in productivity and our revenue that we will, that we will achieve by this restructuring?
Um, I don't think that there will be an increase in productivity or revenue necessarily from that, it's really improvement of services, so, it's basically getting a better return on the revenue that we're willing collecting from the residents.
And that, and that, okay, and then the youth and family, so I understand that part, thank you. And then you're replacing the building department person with, uh, youth and family services revenue savings. So that means that we now have one program specialist working for the city in youth and family services. Correct? Versus the two that were budgeted. Um, there were more than two budgeted, a lot, uh, yes, a lot of the people that were transferred into, just, you know, one second, let me get to the budget. Yeah, I have to, the budget, the adopted fiscal salary, page 30 of the budget, says there were two program specialists budgeted in youth and family for a total of 100 grand. So I'm assuming that now that there's one person in that department that works for the city, and all of the rest are outsourced to JCC.
Yeah, so, um, we, we, we have reorganized operations of the youth and family department that transferred one of the people into the, um, into the building department. And I believe the daughters were transferred to, that there were more that were transferred to, um, to different, to recreation. Um, so the total number of employees did not increase, the services, uh, will be improved, and, um, the positions will be preserved of the employees, and, um, we'll, we'll be evaluating the operations of the service center on an ongoing basis, and we will, um, pursue the more... And we will pursue more improvements in that area.
You know, operationally, when a resident comes off the elevator, third floor, instead of having to walk all the way down, they could have a whole service type of transaction.
Yes, we cross-train employees from different departments. So obviously, the operations of the departments, like not everything, but the building department employed, tax receiver department employed can do. But there's certain questions, certain information that they come for here that can be addressed right there and done. I call the elevator, so they wouldn't have to come back and then make multiple trips. So in this respect, hopefully this is frustrating and now consolidation of the operations, it will be better.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea, Nina, and just frustrating is key. And I think it will be hopefully more efficiency and less errors.
All right, any more questions from the council? Here are none. Any questions from the public? All right, CNN, let's move on to item nine.
Item nine is a resolution authorized publication of notice of publication, application of official requirements for seven sixty-eight West Beach Street for a butcher shop. Is item number one for public, this is a publication only here in New York, October nineteenth at seven p.m. On to the voting. Stop at item number two. Which is a resolution authorized by the city manager to purchase recreation alcohol, T-shirts, sweatshirts, sweatpants, jackets, and hats for all those responsible vendors. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Gorey.
Yes.
Councilor Mandel.
Yes.
Councilor Trustee.
Yes.
Vice President Piggins?
Yes.
President Fenton?
Yes.
Item three is a resolution authorized by the city manager to purchase fire hydrants for all those responsible vendors. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
It was me, I see, second.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Gorey.
Yes.
Councilor Mandel.
Yes.
Councilor Trustee.
Yes.
Vice President Piggins?
Yes.
President Fenton?
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorized by the city manager to enter contract or later since maintenance, and sell responsible vendor. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Gorey.
Yes.
Councilor Mandel.
Yes.
Councilor Trustee.
Yes.
Vice President Piggins?
Yes.
Vice President Fenton?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorized by the city manager to execute an agreement for installation of an enclosure with open, open air treatment bases at the city's board treatment. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
All right, I'll be second.
Voting, Councilor Gorey.
Yes.
Councilor Mandel.
Yes.
Councilor Trustee.
Yes.
Vice President Piggins?
Yes.
President Fenton?
Yes.
Item six is a resolution authorized by the city manager to accept funds for the New York State municipal workers' compensation allowance. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
The way this council did happen.
The whole, the whole, the best of the closing. Second? Do I have a second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Gorey.
Yes.
Councilor Mandel. Uh, Councilor Trustee.
Yes.
Vice President Piggins?
Yes.
President Fenton?
Yes.
Item seven is a resolution authorized by the city manager to execute an agreement with the county of Nassau for the operation of buses by the city of Long Beach and Long Beach railway station. Would you just move the adoption of this item as a mandate?
I will.
Second?
No.
Voting, Councilor Gorey.
Yes.
Councilor Mandel. Councilor Trustee.
Yes.
Vice President Piggins?
Yes.
President Fenton?
Yes.
Item eight is a resolution authorized by the city manager to accept funds for the twenty-two one, twenty-two fiscal year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Gorey.
Yes.
Councilor Mandel.
Yes.
Councilor Trustee.
Yes.
Vice President Piggins?
Yes.
President Fenton?
Yes.
Item nine is a resolution authorized by the city manager to accept funds for the application of official requirements for seven sixty-eight West Beach Street for a butcher shop. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Gorey.
Yes.
Councilor Mandel.
Yes.
Councilor Trustee.
Yes.
Vice President Piggins?
Yes.
President Fenton?
Yes.
Do you make a motion to close with you?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilor Gorey.
Yes.
Councilor Fenton?
Yes.
Councilor Trustee?
Yeah.
Vice President Piggins?
Yes.
President Fenton?
Yes.
All right, good luck, bad time. People know what to do, but three minutes, time. And our first person up is Mr. Pagani.
Before I read this, I just wanted to let it run out without a personal attack of anybody on the stage. Okay, here we go. City council, is it true that this council, knowing that I had full evidence of payroll theft, refused to investigate and prosecute the head mechanic excessive garage? And his supervisor, who allowed the head mechanic not to sign in or out on the time she enrolled five years? The council, the council does know that it's mandatory that all employees shall sign in and out for accountability or underpaid. Well, he would have paid. And not only where he was officially for five years, his supervisor destroyed the van and the whole shop of the garage. The vehicle sales went down in the tubes, did not, down the tubes or nothing. Buses, trucks, police cars were breaking in and out. In and out is harder. In fact, two buses went down, one bus there over a year, over a year. And another bus in six months. Not all of this and more, the people told me to fix the problem. This is what you did, you abolished his position and told people to pay attention. And fixed trucks for the same eight thousand dollar pay and not counting overtime. Well, as you know, he refuses, he refuses and is looking for proof in his job back. Is this justice for what he did? Madam. This is a kind of act of a crime. A crime is payable for theft and dereliction of duty. This council, this council arms of this, just like the past administration. No fat box, it's been almost seven years now. No, no competent bus service, bus servicing of vehicles as the federal transportation administration. The buses should have been serviced at least seven times since this administration took over in 2020. Let's go, let's work, city manager, now again, let's see. If that salesman's he found was a problem, if not, see, he's broken federal transportation law. No fact, which I'd like to clarify, federal dollars, transportation dollars were given to the city until, until beginning of 2020. But all those dollars got to the bus transportation department.
Mr. Pagani, can you move the Michael Wood's car?
Move it? All right, this?
Yeah.
I'm not used to this stuff. But any, anyone in this room would like to see the evidence I have, just contact me. Thank you, good night, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Pagani, in fact, you did give us some information, which has been turned over to corporation counsel and we have been investigating. What you did was you got the information from another employee who can be considered a disgruntled employee. And so when we look into employee matters, we don't discuss them with the public. What we do is we look into all of our employee matters to see that if the complaints that we are getting are valid. And so as you tell us about everything that's going on in our city, in the different garages and the buses, that means that we have an employee that could be disgruntled, that's coming back telling you information that we would have to investigate. And so at no time have we not investigated, maybe we have not investigated on your time schedule, but that means that we will investigate and anything that happens with an employee stays within the city and every eye is dotted, every tear is crossed. I want you to know that as a city manager and as a professional, I don't take somebody's word for what somebody is doing illegally or not, or trying to rob the system. That we will investigate it thoroughly so that any decisions that are made with any employee, that we can prove that that was done. So yes, you gave me the information and it has been passed on and investigations have been ongoing. Unfortunately, I guess, for you, it has not been timely enough. And so that the employee that continues to, continues to give you information, also again, can be a disgruntled employee who's not getting what they think they well deserve. And so I would suggest that you tell that employee instead of being disgruntled with you and you coming here giving information to bring it to their appropriate people, to talk about what they're disgruntled about. There are several people, including the union, that they could go to, to say that they feel that they're being treated unfairly. So thank you.
Oh, can I just say one thing? Now, I looked at the evidence that I, that I had that shows that this individual did not sign in. That alone is fine.
You cannot say what we did or did not do.
No, I know what you did.
No, you do not know what I did. And you, no, you do not.
I know exactly what you did.
You did not, Mr. Pagani.
All I know is I had the paperwork, this guy didn't sign it for five years.
How did you receive the paperwork?
How did I receive that paperwork?
You're not employee of the city, how did you receive the paperwork?
I'm gonna tell you exactly how.
Yes.
I found it in the garbage can in the dumpster out of, out of the, the city garage, okay?
Okay.
Somebody contacted me, a supervisor, who knows, who was the supervisor there, he dumped it. And I got the ketchup and the hamburgers and everything else on it.
So, okay, thanks very much.
If you want to review it.
Thank you very much.
If not, it's on you.
Thank you very much.
Don't review it.
Thank you.
It's fast enough.
And we'll make sure that we protect our garbage.
And I'm gonna give all the information to the people who want.
Okay.
Who you job? James Howard. How's that?
James, welcome. Uh, thank you for James Howard, United Bobby's Wall Street. Thank you for, again, always being able to come and speak at our city council meetings. I'd also always thank our wonderful auxiliary, police officers who find, uh, they do. I'm coming here to say that, well, this will be one of the last council meetings that I speak to you as the cheerperson of the Long Beach Long Beach King Center. I am tingly doubt, I've been on board for sixteen years and I've had the wonderful, wonderful time served. I will be advising and helping them any way that I can. I ask that you support them. But in saying that, you know, I, I say that I've always been an advocate, before I got on board, and I'll be an advocate after. But what I say is that in being an advocate, we wouldn't have the things that we have in society if different, uh, communities, different groups wouldn't speak for it, right? Women wouldn't be able to vote and women didn't come together and the AOH wouldn't have been able to have Irish data. They did all the hard work that they did. African Americans wouldn't be able to vote if they didn't do what they did. So I say that I come to you in advocating, sometimes emails just don't do the justice. And as a community activist and advocate, I say that it's sad that we can move monies and do emergency things when the MLK didn't have air conditioning for the whole summer. Children had to stop programming, many of the emails went through. But there was no emergency funds that went through for children. I, I, I question the care of low-income people, not just the community that have the most African Americans in, in the city of Long Beach. But I question the care of Mel Park because it seems like sometimes we deny, we deny it. If, if I don't come and speak at council meetings or if others don't do what they do, we may not get our voices heard. So I speak for the voices. I speak sometimes for those that don't have funds and don't have money or don't want to come and speak. So I ask that you, you allow community development funds to go for security, which is low to moderate income, security at the recreation, but you denied security at the Martin Luther James Center, you took our security away. You denied urgency money to be spent for cameras at the center when we had so much gun shooting over the summer. So we had to dip into our emergency funding and fix the cameras. You denied senior programming, but you started senior programming at the recreation. The fire alarm that closed the center, and I'm quoting, the fire alarm that closed the center during the middle of a pandemic feeding three hundred and seven people, that fire alarm has been gone off for two months and just got fixed. The fire alarm still is not working because the fire alarm went up the other day and the fire department didn't, didn't come. I had to qualify the fire, tell them the fire alarm.
Excuse me, your time is expired, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna continue just a couple of seconds like you do everybody else. So again, federal dollars that have been given to the MLK Center, I ask you, if you go through all of that money that was given going same, why is it still stuck in that building that is not fixed? Housing, if you care so much about the community, twelve housing units that could have been for low-income people, you denied. When the zoning board, majority of them was getting ready to approve at the city council, or some got involved and denied it. So again, I say this because communities need advocates like you were advocate John Mendo, as I finished, for the Western neighbors. So again, I say what I'm saying because I ask that you respect the children that sometimes can't speak for themselves. And I ask that you look at several things more than just what I said. Human dignity, please, I ask that you care about the less fortunate and those that don't have. As much as others that may be all around the city of Long Beach. So again, thank you for your time and thank you for letting me go over, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, James. Ms. O'Leary.
Um, I just wanted to add with the putting signs up for the jetties. I think it's important to, excuse me, also put a sign up saying stay off the jetties. This year, I witnessed a forty-five year, a forty-five minute argument between four specials and a family. They were arguing about being fined because it wasn't posted that keep off the jetties right there. And it was really, I really thought it was gonna get violent at some times. The year before, there was a bunch of teenagers out on the jetty and the girl furthest out was doing handstands on the jetty. That one I called nine-one-one for. So I, I think there might be signs toward the boardwalk and so forth, but people are not getting it right at the. but people are not getting it right at the jetties. So I would just add that, um, we might want to get it right at the jetties. So there's no question about it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're in listening.
Roy, that's the Long Beach. Um, you know, it's kind of strange. I listen to Ron and he's got good points and I listen to James and he has powerful points. And a lot of this stuff could be looked at by the ethics board. And you know, I've been advocating for an ethics board for years and we haven't had an ethics board for about nine years. So once again, I'm going to advocate that it's, you know, I know you did a really great job of setting up boards, but that was the one board that was, that didn't get set up. So, you know, if people know that they can complain to somebody other than the council or the county city manager and an independent body, sometimes it helps some of these things. Uh, I just have a couple of questions. The, um, LGDTQ, what do you say, money? What happened to that? That was, uh, I think 97,000, that we certainly could use. And, uh, back in August, I had suggested that we continue the Zoom meetings for the people who, uh, don't feel comfortable going out and yet still want to participate. And I, I notice now we're giving out masks and more people wearing masks. And I know you said we were looking into it, but it's been a couple of months and I'm wondering if we can, uh, get that started again.
You want to ask about LGDTQ? More legal issue? I, I mean, it hasn't been a lot, yeah.
You know what?
It's legal. Yeah, I, I don't know if it's ongoing litigation or done, but.
I'm sorry, is this litigation because I don't, I didn't see any litigation?
No, there's no active litigation, right? There's no litigation.
I, I had asked about the funds and I was told that they were written off already.
Written off?
Yes, as ongoing.
Is that true?
That's true.
So we just let it go? 97,000?
I thought it was 70,000.
Whatever. Okay, thanks.
You have a question about Zoom meetings?
You asked another question?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. For Zoom meetings, um, Governor Hope basically passed a law right now allowing, uh, remote meetings to resume again until January. Uh, so we, we theoretically can't have remote meetings again. Um, we can't have a hybrid. We don't have technology to do it, but we could go flip the remote and we can stay in person. That's currently where we are, just with Governor Hope and law.
So I, I understand it differently. I understand, you know, courts are doing hybrid and, you know, I didn't understand.
Very much. That was one of those.
I'll follow you.
That was one of the seminars here she went to, please say, we have to do a rich check.
Yeah. All right. It's a topic of debate.
Okay. All right, Nora Egan.
Councilman Delaria, I hope you realize there's no extra pay for doing that.
Um, Nora Egan, Long Beach. I still have a question. A couple of years ago, we got a grant for cameras at the train station. And I'm just curious, are they still there? And if you have an issue, do you go to the Long Beach Police or do you go to the MTA? I still got that grant. Do we still get that grant? Do we still buy that?
We asked for cameras in Long Beach, right?
What's up?
We asked for cameras, but it's different.
So the cameras at the MTA, uh, they are functioning mostly, not, it's not that they're absurd. They're different cameras. We have cameras from the city and we also have cameras that the MTA itself is taking. So we do have cameras. Uh, we do have an issue right now with heat coming here, but we have access on the property there. So, um, they're most, they're mostly working. We want to do the medallists, we're doing the tosses, we're getting fixed. And we use them to try and catch shares of the, uh, down on towards the.
And why is it a hard one?
Sorry?
Do you know what the court is?
How long or would it last? Um, I know it's more than 30 days. We have 30, we have 30 days, but I check me very specific about it because it depends on how much motion is activated on each camera. None of them are actually, it's a second issue.
Okay, so you just said the, you, you, you have the.
It, it depends on, she's asking whether or not she goes to Long Beach Police Business. It depends on where.
You need something from the camera.
So, so you can come to us and we can tell you whether or not it's ours or it's the MTA's. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and Dan Craig.
I got your call. Thanks very much. I am very pleased with you. Uh. So good evening, uh, council members. Um, looking through the agenda, I see plenty of, um, routine items that I understand must be addressed. And I, um, I commend you for all your hard work throughout the year. Um, what I don't see on the agenda is, um, what we're doing as a city council to increase the income to the city or decrease our expenses. Um, I'd like to make a request from the city council that potentially at the next meeting, a report be given by yourselves or the city manager of what's being done to address the biggest issue we have in Long Beach, our fiscal issues. As you know, it's the most critical issue right now. And, um, I'd like to know what's being done about it. What studies are being undertaken? What departmental changes are being made? What interactions are being undertaken with our county, state, federal partners? I assume all this is being done. I know you guys are on top of things, but I'm just requesting that, you know, instead of it being done behind the scenes, that you update us at the next city council of, um, as to what's being done. You know, uh, potential in spreadsheets showing the net increases in revenue, whether that increases in expenses than you expect. Um, again, I know you're working on it, but business as usual is no longer acceptable. And we need to start keeping the camera down on the road and then start making changes that are going to address the issues. So I just request that we, you know, give an update at the next city council if possible. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Um, so I would have to respect you for agreeing to your assessment because I think, um, at, um, a lot, not at every meeting, we address most of the revenues and expenses. Um, for example, for fiscal year 2022 budget, before the fiscal year 2022 budget, um, this administration, the city council had approved the revenue policy, which actually prescribed the city council to review cities revenue on an annual basis. So, um, then we did exactly that and we reviewed, um, all the permits and licenses, benchmarked it to the other municipalities to assure that the city collects its share of revenue. We reviewed the beach park, um, operation and we came to a very comprehensive revenue versus expenses analysis that was shared, um, from several different meetings. And, um, as a result of that, uh, the beach park prices, um, of the passes were increased. And while I understand that a lot of, an unpopular, right, decision to decrease the prices of the passes, but it's expensive to operate the park. And if you don't treat the residents of the city, do not share this with the non-residents, that all has to come from somewhere, that from a source of, that's the, by the city residents to provide the taxes. Um, I believe just maybe the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, we discussed the fact that we're transitioning our, um, cash accounts to three different banks. That's also done, that, that's in review of the city's operations and that's to optimize the, minimize the expenses and optimize the returns. And, um, I think that every single item that we discussed and I bring up and a lot of things that come up on the agenda, while we were not specifically saying, well, this is to decrease the expenses or reduce the revenue as the preface, the context tax of it is that we're constantly looking into it. And there is a policy, as far as revenue, we should policy that the rights of the council to do just that.
Also, I want to make note that we have, um, talked about our, our transparency. And so unlike, um, other administrations, we put everything on the website. We have a debt dash on the website which shows all of the monthly financials. Um, so we show revenue and expenditures. We are not hiding anything.
So let me just say, I'm not saying you're hiding anything. And I agree, everything that's done financially is shown. So I think that there's, you know, even today, the Nassau County, uh, agreement to charge for the no-beach service or whatever. And that's a great thing. I think we're talking about that, everything. All I'm asking for is, is a simple summary of what expen, of what expenses we produce through reorganization, through, you know, save cost saving measures, a summary sheet, at least which was a spreadsheet. Here's what we produce from our expenses. Result we reduced it. Here's what we've done to increase our revenue. Um, in, in a summary format, instead of just individual items through multiple meetings that we have put together and then summarized to make, maybe the issue count.
Give us a call.
Yeah.
Yeah, give us a call because how we reduce rep, how we increase revenue or reduce expenses is through the budget process. And then we say this is the numbers that we know that, or we anticipate receiving and you can't go beyond this budget. And so that's done at the, actually, we will start the budget process next month. That's not something we go over every single time saying we reduce expenses outside of when they go off a bid. We try to make sure that everything is in mind and that we get the best product for the cheapest price. And so that's in the bid process. But when we do the budget, that's when we say this is all the revenue we know or we feel that we will receive. So therefore the expenses, we'll have to reduce expenses. And believe me, every year that I've been here, which I've done two budgets, we have reduced expenses.
Agreed. But thank you, Ray.
Yeah, so we should, you can call Ena anytime if you have questions so that you can understand how we do the monthly process.
And just one summary statement. I think we need to be more aggressive on what we're doing to reduce costs and more aggressive on what we're doing to gain income, whether it's, you know, deals with our federal partners, our state partners.
We are, we are, we go after every grant. For example, next Tuesday, I will be doing a presentation for a grant that we applied for, we made round two for a $28,000 grant. Um, and so we go actively after every grant we can and when we know we can reduce expenses, we try to reduce expenses.
And Mr. Craig, um, the group, the commissioner have described, uh, parking revenue that should generate revenue as is not expected for budget. Additionally, probably the biggest problem parking leaders is, in my opinion, if we can, because of stats, it's a central revenue source.
And those are the ideas that I'm looking for. Bigger, bigger ideas, if you're right. We'll save this up.
Just remember that the big ideas are only gonna keep us treading water because of a lot of the past obligations that we have to address.
And business as usual keeps going everywhere.
We're not business as usual. Every single day that I've been up here and that I've been here, it's not business as usual in Long Beach anymore.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Dan. All right, that's it, everyone. Thank you for coming.
We had a problem. So, sorry. Joe, Tommy, and myself. Just, obviously, I mentioned a couple of things earlier.
Get in here, please. Hello? Hello?
That's it, is it?
Hello?
There were just a couple of lines Mr. Hodge mentioned earlier that was, Ron, that we addressed.
Okay, good.
Uh, so one of them was about the 12 units of.
Mr. Hodge? Can't hear you. You just. We want you clear.
There's, there's two points that I heard. One was about the zoning board denial of that proposed variance. City council had nothing to do with that variance. That's before the zoning board repealed an independent body. They basically voted that down because it wasn't compliant with the code. Um, by way of reference, the same avenue had applied the year before that and was a very serious reason. Um, as to your concerns about the center itself, I think we tried to basically create the most open dialogue possible about the timeline of these things and the track system. Um, the city has all four of the center locations whenever you have an event. If the queue system's not working, please reach out to Joe, to Tommy, to myself to secure all the locations. We're not trying to stop programming, kids from having fun or whatever. But it was actually going on. Um, I think those are the two main points that you brought up.
Hey, I just want to respond to you. I want, oh, I wanted, you just said something to me. So, I mean, I called me, you know, attention. Okay, I'll respond after. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to clarify with the, the end of this system, that there is air conditioning in Long Beach. In the offices, there are window units. One area that's not working is, I believe, the most cool area is the gym. Uh, the unit was replaced after sanding it outside. It's out, it's useful life. Um, there had been issues with, I think, people trying to do the right thing, touching the wrong thing. The heat was on, the same as the air conditioning. So it definitely strained the unit and I'm seeing why any means that's a reason that has failed. But we did get an estimate, it's quite expensive. I think it was $148,000. So we're trying to procure the funds for that. Um, the, with sort of the fire alarm, when there's an event in the gym, you have a party, you have balloons and stuff, nine out of 10 times a balloon gets away and blocks the sensor up at the corner, the small sensor, so it sets the alarm into, into the alarm. So it goes up to the fire department and they'll take it out of service because it just keep ringing. So we're paying $1,060 every time for, for our command to come take the balloon down. You know, we, it has to be done. And if you're having a party, you're gonna have balloons, again, with, you know, these things that we can work together with Hodge and the community to, you know, those are simple things that maybe we could put to bed. But, um, I, I personally, as, as a city building, I like to have all the services as far as the electrical service and the boilable blocks. We do it in the other buildings to avoid stuff like this. And again, I know, you know, people are trying to do the right thing, but if you touch the wrong thing, sometimes, you know, it sets into a whole, doesn't set most. But we, we are, we do have a price on fixing the air conditioner if we had money to be done already. Um, and again, we set up an email chain because there was a lot of different people involved, a lot of different factions and the information was getting crisscrossed. So we have an email chain with everyone on it. And if there's anything we need, James or anyone else is asking that email chain, we'll send it right over. And to alleviate some of the issues, our meeting supervisor goes to the building once a week and he puts on to that email chain exactly what he did, what he saw, what he serviced. So this way, everybody knows that one of the things we did is he just checked the heat last week, checked the boil to make sure that it's up and running. So when it does get cold, we're not scrambling. We know the boil is up and running, it's ready to go, it's inspected. You know, New York State inspection, all the tags are good. So if there's any questions at all, you go to that email chain. So if there's any questions at all, you fill that email chain, it will take care of it immediately. Send the emergency chain, by all means, call somebody, we'll come right over.
Okay, just to quickly thank both of you. One, I just hit on the housing thing. Uh, the zoning board had already met and it, it was all separate variants. The zoning board told the owner to go back and do several different things and they said, we see no problem. And so I know you can say what you're saying, but all of that is reported and all of that is on documents and meetings where anybody can see the tape. Not you and I, but anybody could just go and see the tape. All right? They said, do this, should be okay. Came back, said, do this, do this, and it should be okay. They have given, uh, variances of other properties and all of that is documented on tape. But again, if we talk about servicing and helping the, the low income, it could have been twelve affordable housing units. So that, that's it. That's my response to that. It's all on tape. Uh, it's no debate for me, it's all on tape. It's there. They said, and every one of them just about said that if you do this three times, we would approve. Look at the tape. Okay, that's it. Within MLK Center, anybody can move. You can't turn heat and AC on at the same time. I don't like that being blamed on any of the staff that I'm working with and I've worked with for years. Mrs. Odom was the president of the center for nineteen years. I've been there my whole life, it was built on my yard. We have never been locked out of a ballroom, we have never had these issues or problems. So I don't like it to be up here that we don't know how to turn air down and heat up like it's, it's one unit in everybody's home. I don't want that to appear, no matter how nice it's said. Okay? And then it was said that we put filters in it. Who has money to go buy the filters? The city bought those filters because they said they needed to put filters in, different filters because of the pandemic. We did not place filters in there and they, they did whatever they did. The only one that turns the AC or whatever on, and I thank God that I fought very hard to get AC put in the center several years back, when they put it in the gym potty. So again, the housing, look at all of the videos. All right? The city had their own decision of whatever they made. I just feel it was unfair, that's it. And with the center, there is one air conditioner that works in the kitchen, the one that works in the reading room, the gym room, we had to stop because of humidity on the floor and it's too hot in there, so we had to stop a lot of the programs. And if the city is saving so much money, I promise you, we sent the email, multiple emails, to say, let us get a company to come in and give a quote. The city didn't tell us to give them a quote when I got Global Green to come in and we did that big grant for Sandy and said, we sent a thousand, every light bulb in that center was through a grant that I've worked with. It got the city through our nonprofit. National Grid, that's who I worked with. And they came in, did the solar panel and of course worked with the city, but a lot of that was through what we did. They didn't tell us, okay, you tell them to come to us. We sent you and said, we want to probably fix the AC because we have to cancel program. It's children's. And what was sent back to us? Tell them to come to us. So if it really mattered, like we did, emergency air in this building, it's children's. And that's all that I was asking. So if the city says a hundred and something thousand, please let me call some certified air conditioning people and I will raise the money. Cause I promise you, it's only an air unit, it does not cost a hundred and something dollars. I promise you, I'd like to, an engineer that runs all of Garden City air conditioning system, he's the head engineer, he fixes them. We were seventy to sixty percent and of course he had to get some convinces or whatever. If it costs a hundred thousand dollars, we're on camera and everybody listening, I'll shut up for the rest of my life. If it costs a hundred, a lot of people love that, but if it costs a hundred thousand dollars, I will shut up. I promise you it don't cost that much. Let me handle it. Well, now the system got turned off, so we can't turn the air conditioner on because you can't run two systems at the same time. So again, I just don't like that being put on the MLK staff. We've never had no problem like that. I don't, I, you know, some people don't speak up and that's why I'm coming to speak on behalf of them. I worked hard for years with Tommy. You know, a lot of the, the storage rooms are not closed, I worked at the rec for several years. People walk back there, maybe they close it now. This, this city hall door sometimes is open all the time. Not just the door there, the door right here and the door in the back. You know, so, listen, I'm just saying my piece off of what you said. Everything is on video. Please let me call the air conditioning company. I want to save my city some money. I care about my city.
Uh, do you think, James? What was the only, that you can't turn on the AC and heat at the same time? That's, that's not true. You have a hot water boiler in the boiler room that does the heat and then you have the forced air system in the room of your orders in the meeting room. So it's two separate systems. So you can't, the heat and the air conditioning can't be on at the same time. It's two separate.
Did you know that, like you said, you just let the system and then you guys turned the heating system on? So again, listen, we can, the city manager down there, you can bring somebody down, you can go over the system to show them, Tommy, we did not have two systems. I've been there my, I'm forty-four, it was built on my yard, I've been in that center my whole life. Talking about locking a door to keep somebody out and all that stuff and, and we're there? These issues that we speak of, we never had. Center is forty years today, October of eighty-one. Hope to see you at the twenty-fourth anniversary.
Absolutely.
But again, I'm sorry, I would love to bring you there with some contractors. I promise you, Tommy, it does not cost nowhere. Somebody that gave you a hundred thousand dollars is telling the story to the city. I promise you I can save the system. Let me work on that contract for free. No consulting fees. Please let me work on that.
Get me a cheaper estimate, we'll use it.
Okay. Please let me work on that AC city. Please let me work on the contract for AC for free. No consulting fees right now.
All right, good night, everyone. Thanks for coming.